With the change of pulling Policy 206 from the consent agenda. All right, next, I'm looking for a motion on the minutes.
Madam Chair, Zuzik makes a motion to approve the agendas, or pardon me, the minutes for February 2021 and March 7 and March 18.
All right, can I get a second?
Beer Meyer seconds.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, with none opposed, the motion passes to approve the meeting minutes from February 21st, March 7th, and March 18th. Next, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize the visitors in our room. We have a full room tonight. Thank you all for coming out and supporting Hastings Public Schools. Also, I'd like to thank the folks who are online right now and who will be watching in the future. All right, and next up, we have Raider Spotlight, and we have new little tokens for our Raider Spotlight folks. So this is exciting. All right, Superintendent Champa.
All right, so this is my very favorite part of the board meeting. So we have Raider Spotlight. We have four different groups tonight that we are going to be recognizing. And it's always fun just to recognize and hear some of your background or the experience that you were a part of. But we also wanted to give you something. So we have little tokens tonight that we'll be giving to all of those that we recognize. So with that, the first group that will ask to come up is our Elementary All-Star Choir.
Good, cool. So these are just some of the students that we were able to select for the first ever Minnesota Music Educators Association All-Star Elementary Choir. We, it was up to our discretion for the kids we chose. So we looked for musicianship, but not only musicianship, leadership, and the positive qualities that of kids that we would want to represent Hastings. So these are just a few of those students. They spent a lot of time outside of school with us practicing music that was pretty difficult compared to some of the stuff we do because the honors choir went all the way up to sixth grade, and these are fourth graders, which is cool. And then they spent all day on Saturday, February 17th, at the Minneapolis Convention Center rehearsing with hundreds of students from around the state. And it culminated in a really awesome concert. This was a great learning experience for them.
I liked all of it. It was, it's fun, it's fun to do, and I've been really into theater and music. So I'm, I'm very, I feel like I'm very talented in this. I am Victoria Jones.
My favorite part was making new friends and seeing some people that I might already know. Charlie Nebo.
Um, my favorite part was I met someone new there, and I didn't know that I sang that good. So I found out that I sang good, so. Yeah. Eleanor Sorensen.
I wasn't there. I was sick. I wish I could be there, though. My name is Liam Rumso.
I liked learning all the different songs and exploring new varieties. Sydney Nebo.
All right, well, we are very proud of you, and we have some Raider recognition for you. So congratulations.
So can I ask, are you guys excited about middle school next year? Yeah? Looking good? Yeah? For the most part, yes? All right. I think you'll be rock stars in middle school, it'll be all right.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you, parents, for not only bringing them here tonight, but for all of your support and with it all. And thank you too, very much. So thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list, we have Wind Ensemble, so please come forward.
All right, as you know, our Wind Ensemble performed for the state music convention in February. The group is about 45 members, and I think we have about half of the group here today. So, so thank you so much for the support that you give to the program. Things like that don't happen without community support, without school board support, administration support, parental support. And it was just a fantastic experience. I know a few of you were there. Wonderful performance. This group just is, is something else. So I think all of us know that from, you work with a sports team, or even in the business world, you know, when you have a group that just comes together and really works together pretty spectacularly, it's something else. It's, it's really a magical experience. So that's what this group did. So it's fantastic.
I have repeatedly said, I knew it was a really big deal. I did not know it was that big of a deal, and you were just phenomenal. I played a little snippet of, of your work at the board table and just could not be more proud and supportive of your work. So congratulations. Questions, anyone has for?
Well, I just have to make the same comment I made last month. I was sitting next to Dr. Champa at the, at the event, and it was absolutely phenomenal. But it was literally like I was sitting next to the proudest mom in the room. She was taking so many pictures and videos of you guys. It was, it was amazing. So, great job. Thank you for representing Hastings so well.
Any comments from you on your experience?
Sit down. Yeah, not much to say. It's just, we worked really hard on our pieces, and it was a college-level program. And I just think that we performed it really well, and it was really fun.
Hi, my name is Julia. We have sophomores through seniors in our group, and a lot of times, we spend maybe two months on our music. And this music, we started basically in September and worked on all the way through February. So I think it really says a lot about the group and about our director that we were able to spend so much time really honing and perfecting our music, and that we got to perform it at such a big event. Thank you.
How many of you are returning next year? No couple of you are.
Fantastic.
I just want to say, the support at that event was like insane. Literally, every single director I've ever had in my entire career was there. There were so many parents there. It was so amazing to see the community of Hastings and everywhere surrounding that come together to come watch us perform. And after that performance, there were so many people that were just like amazed at how good we played. And I could really, I could feel afterwards like a fulfillment from how many people were there just saying that we did great, and they loved watching us enjoy ourselves performing. So everyone who came there, thank you.
Anyone else want to say anything?
It seems open. It even turned.
I'll just say that like, as a percussionist, I like that we also got to do like a percussion ensemble piece to kind of like, because sometimes music, you don't always do like the most in percussion parts. So it was nice to have a separate piece that we got to do.
It was a lot of fun, and it was really like cool to see how well, like, I knew that like we had the potential to do good, but like, it sort of blew my mind how good like we ended up being when we like worked on everything for so long. So, yeah, that just blew my mind.
Well, we are so proud of you, so congrats again. Thank you. And to any of your parents that are here too, just a shout out for your continued support. All right, next, we have Employee of the Semester recognition. So we have six employees that were recognized as employee of the semester. Come on up. All right, these are our employees. So twice a year, there are nominations go out, and you were all recognized for the good things that you do. And then that was turned out over to a committee. Some of you recognized multiple times, and then they decided on our top, our top employees for the semester. So we're so incredibly proud of you. And anything you'd like to say, or your favorite parts of being in Hastings? We'd love to hear anything from you, so whatever you'd like to share. And your name, of course.
Yeah, and your name.
Is this on here? Okay, I'm Josie Sepan. I am at Pinecrest this year. And as a fellow Hastings graduate, coming back here in the last two years, I just feel really fortunate to be here, and I'm really loving my experience here. I recognize a lot of faces around the table, so it's good to be here, and I'm really loving my time this year. I'm in a little bit different role as an MTSS coach, and so I get to work with kids K through 4, and that's been a really fun ride this year. So I'm just happy to be here. More happy that my grandfather is here, the former superintendent. So it's fun to share this one with him.
Hi, my name is Melinda Zajak. I am an administrative assistant at McCullough Elementary School. I have worked in the district for seven years. I'm also a former graduate of Hastings, and I have two kids at the middle school. So I'm very fortunate to be able to work in the community that I grew up in and the community that my kids are growing up in too. So I love Hastings schools, and I'm looking forward to more years. Thanks.
I am Samantha Pearl. I am, I work at Tilden, so I get to work with the littlest of learners here in Hastings. And I am born and raised, graduated from Hastings High School. I have two boys, one in middle school and one in high school. So, yeah, I love it here. I'm a lifer.
Well, just to break the streak, I am not from Hastings, but I'm happy to be here. So I'm Kristin Habricorn, and I teach sixth grade communications class. So communications class is kind of a partner to language arts class, where we focus on writing, word work, research, grammar, things like that. So I love it. I have a great team to work with, and it is fun to help students develop as writers. Thank you.
The one we are missing.
I was hoping there was no speech. Lindsay Samuelson, I work at JFK Elementary. My sixth year. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And I married into Hastings, I didn't graduate from here. But love my job. I'm the Janet Para.
We are missing Trent Hanson, who was our sixth one. And when you just said you love your job, I think it's obvious because you wouldn't have been recognized if you didn't. So thank you for your service, and I have a small token. And our final group we're recognizing tonight is our Career and Technical Department. So if you can please come forward. February was Career and Technical Month, and we are just fortunate to have you and your roles. And so come on up, introduce yourselves, and how long you've been here and what you teach.
My name is Eric Dietz. I teach at the high school, drafting, woodworking, photography, driver's ed. And I think 17 years is how long I've been here.
I'm John Dewall. It was kind of crazy walking in here today. Mr. La Croix, he was the first superintendent that hired me 43 years ago. I was 22 years old when I got hired. I was literally teaching here in agribusiness. We had all farm kids, and the furthest road you could go west out of here was Westview Drive. And I was coaching cross-country, and the kids go, "All right, Dewall, we got to run on Featherstone," which was a farm trail going up into farm fields where the high school is right now. So a lot of memories from this high school. I've actually met my wife here. She taught music here at Hastings for 20 years, or for 10 years. And then she retired and stayed home when we had our son Lars was born. When we built the new school, I, with Mr. Johnson, he was our principal. And we designed the greenhouse and everything at the high school off of Bachmann's, Bailey's, and whatever. So I teach horticulture. It, it's a phenomenal program at high school. We got about 350 students that are in the hort program. We got floral, landscape, greenhouse, natural resources. I love this community. I just would say, you know, I wouldn't be doing it 43 years later if it wasn't for the support of administration over the years, the faculty, working with these guys. It's fun to come to work every day. You know, I, I just enjoy it. Actually, the last three years, I coached for 40 years in cross-country, Nordic, and track. And I haven't done that for three years, but it just gives you such a revitalizing feeling working in the classroom. It's been like the last three years have just been probably the most fun years I've ever been teaching. So enjoy the program, enjoy you guys as administrators and the community. I can't tell you how supportive this community has been over those years. So just thanks to everybody that has worked with me over the years, and all the kids and families that, that I've had a lot of fun with. So anyway, thanks, you guys.
I didn't know we had to give our livestock, actually. That's good. Nice, Dave Davenport, Hastings High School. Let me just backtrack there as well. He's now getting grandkids of kids he taught, okay? So that puts him in perspective. It is true. Absolutely, it's true. So I'll just put that in perspective for you. So Dave Davenport, Hastings High School, been here approximately about 30 years now. And Ken was in charge when I first came here. There was two people in district's office. There was Ken, and who's the secretary, Ken? Shirley Meyer, Shirley Meyer, Shirley Meyer. There's two people in the office, and so times have certainly changed. And when I first met Ken, in fact, I was walking out of the district's office one day, and I went to the district's office, and the door was locked. And, and he was coming out, and I thought it was a janitor. And, because he was the last man in the building, I said, "Oh," I said, "He said, 'Can I help you?'" I said, "Yeah, I'm after the office." And he says, "Oh, it's closed." And I always thought it was someone like out of the mafia. He always like reminded me of someone out of the mafia, Ken, when I got to know him, but good guy, good solid guy. So we go back sometime because he's got a great accent on him, et cetera. I'm not local, by the way, as you can probably tell, I'm not local. But I've been here 30 years, and great, you know, when I first came here, I actually came around this building and around the outside of it, and there was no graffiti, there was no trash, and I wasn't sure if I'd go back into teaching. I'd been teaching in England, wasn't sure if I'd go back into teaching, got offered various jobs. And I was just impressed by the whole school, the area. And I went downtown to some of the local coffee shops, and just went in the shops, antique shops, and asked, "What's the school district like?" There was nothing but positive comments, and it's been like that ever since. You know, I enjoy working here, and just like John, I wouldn't be here for 30 years if I didn't enjoy my job. And, and, and in support of the students, I mean, great students. Majority of students we have, 99.9% of students are solid kids with hearts of gold. And that's, that's the bottom line. What do I teach? I teach electronics, housewiring. We do a whole selection of things now. We kind of bounce around between different areas, but those are the main areas, the small engines. And, and that's where the jobs are, that's where the kids want to be often, and that's where the future is for a lot of these students. And so we always push those areas, the trades and similar. Not that 40 degrees isn't good, and, but it's $100,000. As my daughter knows, spent $100,000 on a 40-degree to be a teacher, lasted one year, and then got out of it. Is now working in the shop. So choose wisely, parents, choose wisely. So I'll leave that with you.
I'm Nathan Newman. I've been here for 14 years. Thank you for having us here to just talk a little bit about our classes. I teach automotive and machining and welding for the most part, and I really enjoyed my time here with the students and just the supportive family and community. We get a lot of support from the community businesses, and they've always been the difference-maker in just having a class that can run and provide a lot of opportunities for the kids. The kids that go to Hastings are lucky to be here. I feel lucky as a teacher, as, as everyone said, to be able to work in this district with the people we work with and the students we work with. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Just a comment that in our survey this past fall, we asked our families and staff what our priorities were, and you know this, but number five was career and technical education. And we have watched that pendulum over a number of years, but really valuing and understanding that we have a lot of choice, our students have a lot of choices, and that's exactly what we want them to have. So thank you for all your work. We celebrate your work, and we have a small token for you. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, next, we have the Listening Session summary from tonight. Tonight, we had three folks who came up for public comment. The first person had two points. One was comments on Policy 417, which is up for our first reading tonight. That is related to drug and alcohol use. I can't, sorry, I don't know the exact name of it off the top of my head. But the concern is that we've added a current practice into the policy, and the concern is that we are potentially creating a liability for staff. And in, in general, there's a concern about adding procedure to policy. There was also a statement during our working session when we talked through this policy that when, when five students found out that their parents would be involved regarding drug or alcohol use, they requested to not be, not be, not receive any help. And so that was the first, the first part. The second part of the comment was data request. So for those who were here in January, we had Minnesota Data Practices Request Report, where we reported on how much money, how much legal money we were spending on data practice requests. And we did not have it last month. Last month, we didn't have any expenditures on that, which is why it wasn't on the agenda. And there's an additional request that we, and I'll say we have it on tonight's agenda as well. So the plan is to continue to report on that. But there was another request to include the cost of board member questions and the legal fees associated with that. The second speaker came to address us was a former school board member herself and is also an election judge. She was involved in the redesign of elections when she was on the school board. And so she stated that she would, she encourages our board to have the conversation to avoid polling place confusion. And also for it to be a cost savings, she would like us to have a conversation to move our school board elections to even years. And I would just like to make the comment that this is perfect timing because this is actually slated for the board to have a conversation on this within the next couple of months. And then our third commenter came up and spoke about the curriculum. We have Read Act curriculum that is on tonight's agenda for the literacy, for literacy in the district for K through 5. And she stated that she understands that there's state money tied to the two curricula that we have to consider, and that wit and wisdom is the most liked curriculum. However, when she did an internet search, she stated that she's found concerning ideologies in the curriculum inappropriate topics for when we're teaching kids to read, including suicide, gender fluidity, race, cannibalism, and dark imagery overall. And I was writing really fast, but I know there were a couple more that I missed. And she stated there's a concern because the, the framework for this curriculum is where kids read a book, and then they basically spend weeks having the conversations and working with that specific book. So one of her concerns was that they would speak, spend basically weeks working on this piece of darkness type of thing. working on this piece of darkness type of thing. And so, she asked that we reconsider the curricula that we're considering. All right, did I sum it up all right? Missed anything, board members? All right. Okay. And, all right, so, next up, we have Reports and Discussions. Superintendent Chapa.
All right, I really don't have much of a report other than this is testing season. So, as soon as we move into spring, we also call it testing season. We had ACT and MCA at the high school yesterday, and that just kind of kicks everything off. So, we'll be really busy with that moving forward. Obviously, we just had some inclement weather. So, if you ever doubt your decision-making and how a community feels about, just make a weather decision and then you know really quickly. And so, one of the things in one of the radar updates, I did include an overview of what it looks like to close school or make a weather decision. And I will say that it looks very different when you're a student, because I was there as a parent, as a teacher, and now as a superintendent. So, you're just always, your lens is in so many different places. And really, the late start was thinking about 16-year-olds on slushy roads for the first time and just having that concern. So, with that, the weather never plays in our timelines the way we'd like it to. And hopefully, that's it for the season or year. All right. Next, we have our Cadence of Radar Responsibility. So, all of our administrative team members have goals in all of those three anchor areas and report monthly on where they are. They also have a narrative on each of those. All you see is collectively where we are. And I know before this, in progress and pursuits and some of the onboarding, you heard some samples of what those look like. Any questions?
It's like progress. It looks like progress.
It is progress, yes.
How high does the scale go?
10.
Okay, good. Next up, we have our Native American Parent Advisory Committee Non-Concurrents Plan Review. Superintendent Chapa again.
Okay, so, we had our committee provided a vote of non-concurrents a month or so ago. So, we have 60 days to respond to that. This is not that response, but what this is, is a review of all of our measurable goals. And then, what is our progress towards that? And many of our goals were that liaison position. And we have interviews on April 10th, so we're excited about that. However, we're quite far into the 23, 24 school years. So, in that area, was progress sufficient? No. We hope that it will be for the following year. And along the way, you can note all of our goals. That first one, support the academic achievement of American Indian students. That was a six-part goal, again largely based on having the liaison in place. The next area is making curriculum relevant to the needs interest in cultural heritage of American Indian students. Number of things there. The note in review is progress has been made, but much of the action plan is for the 24, 25 school year. And then, the next one is provide positive reinforcement of the self-image of American Indian pupils. And that, you can see we have two goals there. And we have made some progress there, but we'll continue to expand that and develop intercultural awareness among people, parents, and staff. This one has multiple parts as well. So, all of these goals are in progress and they were partially completed. And, oh, the one I missed there was completely done. And that's the positive reinforcement of self-image. So, we had two celebrations. One of them was the winter meet and greet. The second one will be when our seniors are recognized with a quilt and feather ceremony. And then, developing intercultural awareness. And finally, the last one is supplement state and federal education and co-curricular programs. And we have attended two consulting events with the tribal nations, and we have completed both of those. So, in some of those areas, yes, we were successful. Some are in development. Any questions? This is a requirement by the state to include with our plan.
I should know this, but this isn't anything we need to vote on?
You do not.
Okay. Looks good. Thank you. All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda is an update on the Building Construction Fund from Ms. Subert.
Thank you. So, the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds. And the money can be used for school renovations and improvements. The updates since last month, the high school carpet project, we're kind of doing in phases. So, Phase 1 and Phase 2 are complete. So, that's been moved to that top section. And then, you'll see there's still another project that's in process related to the high school carpet. Overall, there's about $3 million left in this fund with approximately $297,000 unallocated. We've had a discussion that we do owe some money for arbitrage. So, that unallocated amount will mostly remain there until we take care of that final payment and then can be used for other projects as we go through the final completion. If there's any questions, I can take them.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a data request update from Ms. Moon.
Good evening. I have had, since we reported in January, we have had three additional data requests. All of them have been completed and responded to.
Okay. Do we have any costs associated with those or no?
Yes. So, with these bills, there was very small amounts that were for data requests. There was three bills that were attached. There is a total of $425 that's directly related to data requests.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Next up, we have our School Board Committee reports and from our, or School Board Representative reports out. First up is District 917 Report with Director Zuzik.
Thank you. The first one is so darn boring, I don't even think we should look at it. It's the nuts and bolts. It's the meeting minutes from 917. But Ms. Ludwig, if you could put up the next set of slides. Perfect, excellent, and whatever you can do to make that readable for... Actually, it's pretty readable. Thank you. I appreciate it. So, one of the things about 917 that I appreciate most is they have a remarkable focus on vision and culture. And board members, we have this in our packets. And I just ask that you go back to your packet and look at this later. And if you want to see culture embedded into an environment, and if you want to see goals based on culture embedded into an environment, this is a remarkable ideal of that. Then the next slide, if you will, please, Tammy. Thank you. This one, just from, oh, gosh, from 30,000 feet. This is what we all, and I thought it was, the reason I asked to keep this slide in the deck is this is what we're all facing. I mean, look at that middle category, the purple one, critical race theory, COVID era. We're the George Floyd, human-centered sense of belonging. Upper left, if you go to the upper left, you've got global, national, state, local politics. Our issues aren't quite the same as 917's. I would say that our issues in workforce, although they are somewhat more challenging than they were eight years ago, 917 faces a higher degree of challenge in regard to workforces. Next one's, please, Tammy. Thanks. And again, this buttons it all up for what are they trying to do? Remember that we have, at 917, we've developed a program where teachers from abroad, predominantly right now from the Philippines, can come in and teach. The standard for them is they have to have a master's degree or higher in the Philippines to come here and teach. So, these are not like leftovers or people that are not qualified. These are incredibly well-qualified people that we have teaching. And some of them are coming here and we don't have the number of vacancies in teaching. So, they're starting as paraprofessionals. And they're making multiple times what they could have made in the Philippines. So, it's a win-win situation. And then, the last one, and I won't read through it, but the point is, in regard to clarity of vision, mission, core beliefs, and strategic directives, 917 has always been good at that. And the clarity of this document is, and the last two slides are what I think we as a group should aspire to move toward. I mean, when you can get it to one page, when you can get it to two pages, when you can get it to three pages, you're so much better off. So, I'm just really proud to serve on the board, on the school board of 917. Each one of the districts represents one of nine districts, and I'm so proud to serve in that spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Great information. Next, we have the Community Collaboration Committee Update with Director Pine.
Last week, we had our first coffee and conversation at the high school lecture hall. Guessing maybe 50 to 60 attendees, give or take a little bit. It was hard for me to count, but it was fantastic, really great dialogue from the community. Dr. Champa kicked it off with just expression of gratitude for the tech levy, some of the survey results and kind of where the district's at. She gave some updates on some grants that have been received, and then we just opened it up for dialogue. And it was amazing conversation. I tried to bullet on the agenda some of the talking points. I think I captured most of them, but there was questions about the elections, off-year, on-year, staff retention, SRF funds, you know, planning, special education, additional IEP support. You know, where the district was at with safety, discipline, just providing some additional insight on the, like, the free breakfast and lunch and how it's different now versus, you know, prior to COVID. Some questions about the diversity position. And then, we got to share the excitement, you know, the announcement with the Native American position open. Then, of course, just legislation. We, you know, tried to get a plug for everyone to, you know, reach out to their legislators to help support our mission and goals with the board and unfunded mandates. There's a staff appreciation coming up next month. And then, just some different dialogue about how the conferences have been handled, you know, perspective from parents and teachers. And then, there's some dialogue about just back-to-school open house. So, the teachers and the parents can have better interactions, you know, getting to know one each other before the school year starts. You know, they did it last year in September, so they just were tossing out ideas. So, you know, there can continue to have that additional support from families. And then, tentatively, we're going to have our next quarterly meeting in May. And the 15th is out there. I know there was some feedback that maybe Wednesday nights weren't the best night to do it. So, we'll reconvene and do our next planning session and get that posted soon. Did I miss?
I wanted to say, I thought this was a great event. And people can judge it, but I don't know how you can judge it because it hasn't been done in this forum. So, I think this was a positive. It turned into the Dr. Champa Show a little bit. But, you know, if that's the worst thing we do is show off her talents, that's, we're doing good. She was able to meet a lot of the 80% who aren't normally involved. So, I thought, and for me, you know, I'm a woo person. There's never enough people to meet. There's never enough ideas to get. And I want to build and network and let's make this better. I think a couple of the things that, it kind of was all over the map for a little bit. Kind of got a little too many topics, but we can take that and streamline it and make it a lot better. I think this is going to be very efficient. And all the feedback I got from the public was thumbs up. So, great job, Chair Pine. And I'm just excited to move forward with these two talented people and Dr. Champa also. I thought it was a great event. So, once again, thank you.
It's true that there weren't enough people for Phil to meet. I think you started greeting them when they walked in and then said goodbye to everyone. So, it was like a sandwich model. That was great. What I found is that we were a really good educational platform for the folks that were there. They had questions that nerds who live in it know and understand, but we were able to communicate what we know and then harvest micro and macro needs from the community or questions that they have and then begin putting together answers. And some of them were on the spot, and some of them require work beyond that point. But that seemed to be the role we were playing, providing an education where we could and breaking things down in terms that people understand and not using the lingo that has been adopted in education. But then being able to follow up on specific things or connect even people with each other when they talked about the community event and other pieces. It brought parties together that probably were never in the same room and got some things going on, some other things. So, great event. I'm excited to move forward with them and do some tweaking to see if we can make it even better.
Yeah, I just want to say I had, I heard a lot of great feedback from the people who were there. And it sounds like there was a good mix. There were staff, there were parents, there were, you know, just taxpayers. So, it was a great mix of the community that we represent. So, I heard great things. Thank you. Yes.
That is the one thing I forgot to say. I loved it that there was staff there. I would love there to be more next time. Please, I'm reaching out. We want you there. It's important. So, thank you that they came.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the Facilities Committee Update with Director Milner.
Well, how do I follow that massive excitement? Wow. No, actually, this meeting was, we did a joint powers meeting that was held on March 25th. And I didn't know this was present before. So, part of what we learned about was what they had done in the past and the cool things that we've collaborated on as a, as a community between the city and the school district. So, I would say my takeaway from the meeting was it was kind of overwhelming and exciting wrapped together. Because one of the things we discussed was how last year, for instance, there was only 200, and let me get it right here, 207 live births in Hastings. And so, that definitely poses a problem as far as the population of the district. So, how do we get young families excited to come into Hastings? And what do we do collaboratively? And once the ideas, this is the exciting part, the overwhelming part was thinking about that. The exciting part was once the ideas started flowing, it was like you almost had to tell us to shut up because there was just idea after idea after idea. And so, it was just super exciting and, you know, kind of gets you all tingly like, "Okay, we've got tons of possibilities. This community has so much to offer." I mean, we just really do. It's just a matter of working together and revitalizing some things. And so, just to kind of hone it down and keep it into a small chunk, one of the big things is we know that Highway 61 is going to be under construction. And we don't want any more businesses to leave Hastings than have already left. And so, how can we support those businesses and make sure that we're telling people to keep, help keep them alive? And what action steps can we take? Because the more businesses that leave Hastings, the less this community looks exciting for young families. So, those are the ways which we're going to start working together, and I'm super excited about that. I think everybody there was, had good visionary qualities. That's exciting as well, too, just to see that we can think about the possibilities. And last thing I'll say is the next official Facilities Committee meeting is May 3rd at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Next up is the Finance Committee Update with Director Zuzik.
Thanks. Finance Committee Update. The gist of it was that, and we've heard a little bit of the most important drips about this at our work session as a school board. We heard a presentation from Aaron Nielsen, who is a MMKR auditor. And Jen Subert helped us to understand that Aaron, Aaron wasn't here, but Jen Subert talked to us about at our work session. but, but Jen Subert talked to us about at our work session, the value in doing another updated budget. And that's ahead of us in today's, in tonight's agenda. And the gist of it is that there's a better way to report some of the funding that's happened. And it, there's a way in transferring that, that reporting from state to federal, or between state and federal, I should say, that actually nets us a, a benefit. And so that was one of the reasons that we met when we did. It was a little bit based on the, the timing of the information that came out from, well, actually it came out, but Aaron from MMKR and Jen Subert from Hastings Public Schools were both thinking the same way and then came together with that recommendation. And we'll hear about that a little bit more. There were some more important things or some other important things that happened. I think one of the coolest things was the, the people on the Finance Committee, which would be Director Tate and myself, heard just a wonderful presentation about all of the things that happen to make sure that all of the internal controls are there within our district. And for a district of our size, often districts of our size get bumped for internal controls because there's not enough people in the business office, that they get bumped. They get, they get knocked, they get tagged because there's not enough separation of duties. And Jen and her team and their brilliance have decided and determined a pathway so that every single dollar that comes in gets counted X number of times and gets attributed to the right accounts and then gets supervised, making sure that it goes into the right account. That's accounts receivable. Every single dollar that goes out gets supervised and accounted by multiple people on the way out to make sure that we're spending things on the right things and that we're following the statutes and the laws that are required. So I, it was just, it, to me, it left me feeling very, very proud of what's happening in Hastings Public Schools in regard to finance. And our next meeting is, let me see what it says here. It says March, uh, let's see, June 5th, 2002, March 29, or June 29. And that's proposed. And, and it might change, but. So June, June 29. Am I calling my months wrong?
So the June meeting is occurring on May 29.
Got it. Got it. So the, got it. It'll be May, May 29. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Next up, Student School Board Committee update. We are in an exciting time right now for this committee.
The committee has not met again since our last meeting, but the application for the Student School Board Representative closes at 5:00 p.m. on March 31st. After that point in time, the committee will meet and bring back discussions for our next working session.
I have one question. Do we know how many people have, how many kids have applied?
I have reached out and I can get that information back to you as soon as I receive it.
I'm excited. All right. You have it? Any other questions while we're waiting? All right.
I will just mention the policy for the Student School Board Representative is on our agenda for first reading tonight as well.
Thank you.
We have nine applicants for four spots so far. So students, there is still time to get your application in. All right. Yep. It's a fun party. All right. If there's no other questions, next up is the very lengthy Policy Committee update, again from Vice Chair Dressley.
I will. Yes. Sorry. I will start with, okay, so Form 206.1. This is the form that's going to be signed for public comment. Ideally, we want to have this form in place before the April meeting. I'm assuming that Policy 206 will be adopted tonight, which means public comment will be moved back into the regular agenda during the televised portion of the meeting starting next month. And with that, we're updating the form. So I met with our attorney to have a conversation about the form. This was just attached after 4:00 p.m. today. So my question to board members is, I completely expect that you haven't had a chance to read this yet. So my question is, do we want to take a five-minute recess to allow you to read it and have commentary here? The other option would be just review. We've got two forms attached right now. One is the new form, which is the recommended language from the attorney. The other one is what we had been talking about in the Policy Committee. So the two options are take a five-minute recess to read it. We can come back and discuss it here tonight. Or read it and send your, all of your comments, concerns, questions, whatever, to the Chair of the Policy Committee. And then we will discuss it in committee during our meeting next week. So everything, obviously, everything has to be done in the public. So it would just be a one-way email to Vice Chair Dressley. So that's the question. What do board members want to do about this?
I'd prefer to do the latter if we can. I mean, if we can just make recommendations.
Yep.
The only thing that I saw missing, and my eyes aren't good enough to see it from across the room, so. And if it came in at 4:00 p.m., I might have missed it. But we talked about in bullet number one, which was you have to be a resident of the district. We added, or a student or family member of a student attending school. And then something about, or an employee of the school district, ISD 200. So if that's in there, I'm golden.
Okay.
And if not, just let's consider it as a committee.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Is that, is that the desire of the board? We want to, you guys take a chance to read it later and then just send an email? And we'll discuss it in policy? Head nodding, general head nodding? Okay, sounds good. So at least the public has a chance to see this now so that you can also provide comment, should you choose. All right, now onto Vice Chair Dressley for the rest of the Policy Committee update.
There are three Policy Committee summaries included in Board Book. I will give a brief discussion of each, but for anyone who wants to follow along, it's in Board Book under Section 7 E6. The committee summary for 21624, 2024. The Policy Committee received feedback regarding a new model policy from MSBA. It's Policy 606.5 Library Materials. The committee has no recommendation at this time and expects to look at this, at Policy 606.5 Library Materials after the legislative session ends. The Policy Committee summary for 2282024. The Policy Committee reviewed four policies that will be detailed during the policy readings. The committee also reviewed procedure, Policy 601.1 PR, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. This is an outdated district procedure. And based on the feedback that we received from administration, it, it has been removed from our policy manual. Please keep in mind that district procedures do not require board action. This is just for informational, so that everybody's aware of where it went. And then the Policy Summary for 362024. The Policy Committee reviewed five policies and one form. Four policies will be detailed during the readings. I just want to mention that Policy 709 Student Transportation Safety Policy was reviewed. And the policy language ensures student safety, bus route efficiency, and is an effective use of district funds. Therefore, the committee is recommending that there be no changes made to the language of Policy 709. This, based on our three-year policy review cycle, Policy 709 will be up for review in January of 2025.
So the, the reason that we discussed this policy was because there were some constituents who brought up suggestions for changes. They requested that it be considered to have some changes made.
So that concludes my summary of the three policy summaries. Our next policy meeting is on April 5th at 10:00 a.m. Do you want me to move right into first readings? Okay. So tonight for first readings, we have Policy 220, which is School Board Student Representative. There's no MSBA model policy. And the committee drafted the policy 220 using Bloomington, South St. Paul, and Owatonna Student Board Representative Policies as a guide and also received feedback from MSBA on what to include in the policy. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, requests for this policy? Seeing none, I'm going to move right along. Policy 417 Chemical Use and Abuse. Many of the updates that were made align with MSBA model policy. The committee did receive guidance and is recommending the addition to Section 4F. Do we have any comments, recommendations, requests for Policy 417?
I, I, in addition to what's already there, and I would bring this up, I will be bringing it up at the Policy Committee. The legal advice that we received had some additional recommendations. And I just want to make sure that we envelop those additional recommendations into the language of this policy, which might mean that it would get a paragraph longer and be a little bit more descriptive on, on what our employees need to do to either report or not report things to families. And, and there's just, just a little bit more language that needs to be added to beef that up. And we need to go back to all of our groups of people, like counselors and social workers and school psychs, and make sure that we're honoring their, their, their contracts and their licenses and we're not offending it. And, and I think we'll be okay, but there's, the next step might take a little bit longer. And, and both of you, Director, pardon me, Chair Tate, Assistant Chair Dressley, know what I'm talking about. There's some language that is a little bit prescriptive legally that might determine a little bit more procedure on the part of our employees, which supports them more than anything else.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I think I, I said this before, but I remember when we were having a conversation about something else, actually. Principal Doran had said that, you know, the, the employees really appreciate, when you get into these types of situations, they really appreciate the guardrails being well-established in policy. So that has been well-taken and, and we'll keep that in mind in developing policies going forward. All right. Any other comments? Yes, Director Brunns?
Just two points. So when you meet on that, will you be inviting those stakeholders into the room to kind of guide that and then go over that legalese that's being recommended?
So that's why it might take a little bit longer than just by the next meeting is because we'll have to, we'll have to request that those individuals be invited or that the conversations be had by our superintendent with those individuals to bring feedback back to us.
I would just comment that Director Brunns, sometimes it's best that we invite them in the room to have the conversation. But from the advice of Dr. Champa, sometimes it's better that we have somebody else have that conversation with them because they might, as odd as it might seem to us, they might be intimidated by sitting at the meeting with three board members. And so making sure that we can mine that data, mine that information in a way that everybody's free to make their own professional comments clear. We're just really sensitive to that based on a couple of other things that, that we've done. When we, when we make policy, if we have somebody come into the room and we're already talking about policy, it's, it might overshadow their perspective. And we want to not do that.
And then in Section 4B1, there's a, there are five words strung together that have been bothering me since the first time I read it. It says, "That may be evidence-based." So this qualifying statement about programs and activities just saying it may or may not be evidence-based, to me, that feels extraneous. If it's not going to be evidence-based, you don't need to bring it up if that's a qualifier. But if you want it to be evidence-based, just take, just revise that piece.
I have captured that and that'll be a discussion during our next meeting. It is, it is the model policy language, but it is definitely something that we'll talk about based on your, your requests to me. Absolutely.
Anything else on this policy? All right.
Okay. The following policies, I think there's four of them. Okay, so there are four policies. Policy 604 Instructional Curriculum. Policy 618 Assessment of Student Achievement. Policy 619 Staff Development of Standards. And Policy 802 Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Materials. All four of these policies are new policies to our district. And they're, we are recommending the adoption of these four policies using our three-policy procedure, using MSBA's model policy. So we're just recommending the adoption of MSBA's model policy with no, no other changes to them. Is there any questions about these?
I just have one with a math statement in the instructional curriculum. I'm just reviewing to make sure that that language is accurate, but I'm on it.
Thank you.
Does it capture the new requirements like in social studies and those other pieces? So if you look at Sections 2 and Section 3, the requirements of like ethnic studies and personal finance and those. It does say social studies and some are delineated and maybe it's captured in that broader term.
In which policy?
I'd recommend that we hold that as a question to ensure that it matches. Goodness, it was economics. It was, there were three or four different social studies standards that changed. Let's make sure that it's included in this so that we're not making a policy for last year. We're making a policy for next year.
So can I just comment? Those new requirements are not requirements until the 2025, 2026 school year. So it may make sense to look at those, adding those in for this policy before we adopt it. So put it on, I'll put it on the agenda. Thank you. So now we'll, Policy 616 School District System of Accountability. This policy has been on the committee's agenda since February of 2023. The committee is recommending the revisions to align with MSBA model policy. Are there any questions or concerns on? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move right into second readings. We have three policies for second reading. Policy 415 Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of a Vulnerable Adult. Is there any comments, concerns, requests for Policy 415? Seeing none, we'll move right on. Policy 419 Tobacco-Free Environment. Any comments or concerns, requests for Policy 419? Seeing none. Policy 421 Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. Any comments, requests, or concerns? Okay, that wraps up second readings. We're going to go ahead and move right into third readings. Policy 620 Credit for Learning. As a reminder, this policy had its first and second reading in 2023. The committee is recommending that we stick with the model policy language from MSBA and that this be a third reading for tonight. And Policy, are there any questions, requests, concerns? Matt?
I don't know if it's my spring break brain, but I was ruminating on Section 7 Credit for Employment with Healthcare Providers, and that may come directly from statute. But I wondered if we're moving towards pathways that we make that language more global. So credit for employment, leave it at that. And then tailoring the statement, because everything works just for that credit for that employment piece. So like a kid has a skinny course and then they go out and they work and they're getting their certifications and they're getting job coaching and they're getting credit for it. If we remove language that's specific to healthcare, and it might come from statute. I had my time.
So just to clarify that that language does come from statute, and that's why it's in the policy, the way it's in the way it's in there. Any other questions or concerns with 620? Then we're going to move on to policy 206 Public Comments. This is on our agenda for.
Hold on one second. Can we actually do that? Because it's now an its own item.
That's what I was just gonna say, individual action item.
Sorry.
It's been moved to an individual action item, so we will discuss it at that point in time.
Thank you. Sorry I interrupted.
No, that's okay. That wraps up policies.
Okay, thank you. We've been busy, policy committee. All right, next up, we have action items. And the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion and a second on this item.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Zuzik's second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, with none opposing, the motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda. Next item is, or next items are all for individual action. The first item is policy 206.
Policy 206, the reason that I pulled it from the consent agenda is to consider revision of the language in section 6B. The what the suggestion is, can you pull that up, please? Thank you. I think it's highlighted, maybe, yep, right there. So it's highlighted right there, and what the suggestion is is to remove the word, strike the word citizens, and add those who want to participate in public comment. And if everybody agrees with that amendment or revision, then we'll go ahead and move that for third reading and adoption. Do you want to speak more to that, Chair Tate?
No, this just came up in a conversation again I had with Legal and Ms. Moen on the phone, and we were talking about the fact that it was previously any citizen was open to doing public comment. And so now that we're saying that it has to be people who have a direct connection somehow to the district, we would just change that verbiage just slightly. Okay.
So any comments or questions? Everybody fine with that language change?
Right, then with that, I'm looking for a motion on this item and a second.
I motion to adopt policy 206 as revised.
Second pine. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously to adopt policy 206, which again means that we will have public comment back into the regular portion of the meeting during the agenda and televised. Moving on, the next item on our agenda tonight is bills payable. I'm looking for a motion and a second on this item.
Brunns will make a motion.
Beer Meyer's second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, we need an abstention from you. So again, I'm gonna I'm gonna do it again, sorry. Yep, two weeks. Just to be clear, Director Brunns works in District 917, so there are financial transactions there. So the plan is for him to abstain. Not to change, make you change your vote, but I'm gonna make you change your vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. And all those who abstain. All right. Two weeks. So we had, we had Director Brunns made the motion, which is acceptable. The second was, sorry, was it Director Pine? Beer Meyer, sorry. Beer Meyer was second. So we had six in favor, one abstention to pass to adopt bills payable. All right. It helps when I'm paying attention, right? All right, next on the agenda is the revised budget. And I believe Ms. Subert will just give us some additional information on this before we vote.
So this is a second revised budget for this fiscal year, and the revised budget includes a change related to special ed expenditures and revenues. The reason for the change is that there was an updated model released by MDE in February, which is showing a favorable trend in revenue for the district. In addition, there is an ability to take advantage of the increase in special ed cross subsidy aid. So in summary, it's more financially beneficial for the district to use our federal special ed funds towards reducing our tuition costs. In order to do this, the district needs to move some salaries and benefits out of federal and into state special ed. This will allow the district to apply more of our federal funds to tuition, which will increase the state funding that we receive. So Ms. Ludwig, if you would pull it up and go to page two, you can see there's some updates that happen to both revenues and expenditures within both state and federal. But overall, it's an increase of $500,000 to our budget. And then if you go to the next page and kind of go down to the bottom, where you can see the yellow line, our previous budget had the district for unassigned overspending by $79,000. Now with this additional $500,000, our unassigned is positive $420,000. And I can address any questions if there are any.
Thank you. All right, so I am looking for a motion on this item on the revised budget.
With an expression of gratitude for the creativity and the prudence and and efficacy of Ms. Subert, I really want to encourage all of you to vote yes on this. And therefore, I bring the motion that we approve. Although it's somewhat atypical to do a second revised budget, I vote, I will recommend that you approve a second revised budget for the school year.
Second, Dressley. All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the revised budget number two. All right, earlier tonight, I had mentioned that I was not going to put words in your mouth with emotion, but on this one, I am. So the school board has received a proposed separation agreement with employee A to resolve terms related to the employment relationship that have been agreed to by the employee and are recommended by the school district administration. I am requesting a motion and a second for approval of the separation agreement.
I move to approve the separation agreement of employee A.
Pine's second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the separation agreement with employee A. All right, next up on the agenda is the Read Act curriculum.
Mr. Larson, would you like to come up? So this is our continuation of looking at, we first did the professional development, and since, we have been looking at the curriculums, which it was addressed that there are two that are applicable to Hastings. Out of the five, three were foundational, and we already used one of those. So one was a combination with the knowledge, wit and wisdom, and the other was the comprehensive one, which was EL Open Up.
Thank you, Dr. Champa. Board, I want to bring to you tonight kind of an overview of everything that we've gone over. Dr. Champa just did a brief one, and I'll dive just slightly more into it for everyone's reference, but then also bring to you the recommendation of the Hastings staff. So the Minnesota Department of Education did approve those five resources, as Dr. Champa said. Those resources were all put through a very strenuous and highly regulated process for determining which of the programs were closely related to the science of reading. Three of those programs were foundational skills. So those would be the skills that we would focus on mainly in our primary grades, focusing on phonics, phonemic awareness, and other early literacy skills. Of those three, Hastings had begun this year piloting a program from the University of Florida Literacy Institute, which was called UFLY Foundations. That program has been met with great applause from our teachers, and they overwhelmingly support continuing that. So of those three, that is the one that we support using. And then of the two remaining programs that were approved, they were EL Education and Wit and Wisdom. Those two programs focused on the other three pillars of literacy, which were fluency vocabulary and comprehension. So during the state's review process, 24 programs were closely evaluated, and only the five mentioned earlier were passed that evaluation process. So the states mandated that in order to receive funding through the state to help pay for the curriculum, a district must select one of the approved curriculums. I will note, because I know this was brought up, MDE is allowing a resubmission process for the curriculums that were not meeting approval. There is a turnaround for a resubmission of two months. I will confidently say that it is impossible to change a curriculum in two months. So I honestly don't know what could change about a curriculum to have it be resubmitted to meet a higher quality of standard. I do believe that curriculums can be changed and altered to meet a higher quality. I don't believe it can be done in two months. So I don't anticipate hearing that a whole bunch of more curriculums were approved if they continue to use that same process for evaluation. We have been going through this review process for a elementary literacy curriculum for the last year and a half. So this started back in, really in September of '22, being able to start talking about what a new curriculum in our district would look like. Over that time, the teachers in our district have dedicated innumerable hours to being able to make this decision. They have put in time outside of school to be able to review the materials. They have gone through an entire process of looking through a variety of resources last spring, coming to a near conclusion and decision, and then being told to wait because of the decision of the Read Act. We've been able to look at probably close to 10 curriculums over the last year and a half. And even though only these two have been approved, these two were the ones that stood out to us the most even before that approval process happened. Just as a review, I shared these numbers with you last time. Our teachers of those two programs felt, 75% felt that they could implement effective lessons with EL Education, 89% with Wit and Wisdom, sorry, yep.
Pardon me. Mr. Larson, may I please interject a question?
Absolutely.
Slow down and look at the data. And what does this mean? Grades one through two.
Sorry.
Remember, remember that whole thing?
Yes, there was confusion about that.
Do you mind slowing down?
Absolutely.
And just making sure that all of us understand the data because this data is is worth slowing down for. Pardon me, slow down.
No, absolutely appreciate that, Director Zuzik. So we asked our teachers to rate each of those programs on a one-through-five scale. So five was, I feel very confident, and one is, I don't feel confident at all. So when you look through the numbers here, those are not grade levels. Those are the numbers of staff or the numbers that staff selected for their confidence level in that question. So the reason that we grouped three through five on the bottom was we felt that that meant that they were either okay or very confident in that program. So if you look, that 75% says that of the teachers who responded to this evaluation, 75% of them felt that they were okay or very confident in being able to implement effective lessons in their classroom with EL, and 89% felt the same way with Wit and Wisdom. Director Milne.
So do you know what made the teachers feel that they could, you know, what what were they basing that on? Like the training that's involved, or what are they basing this decision on?
So a large number of the teachers, or I should say, a large amount of that recommendation comes from teachers diving into the materials themselves and being able to look at all the aspects of teaching when it comes to it. So it would be the planning side of it. It would be the actual core content. It would be the way that we engage students in those lessons. I think the engagement piece was something that we spent a lot of time looking at because we know that students who are engaged and activating their minds are learning better and are also better able to be a part of a classroom community in an effective way. So when we looked at that, one of the things that I did encourage, or I should say discourage, our staff from doing was looking on social media. Because as I told them all, social media has a strong tendency to lean in a negative direction, no matter what it is that you're looking at. Many of our staff found online, both programs had negatives and positives from people on social media, saying, oh, this is extremely hard to teach. This is something that after you teach it the first time, you won't want to teach it again. That was one of the things for EL, and I think that was one of the swaying factors for some of our staff, despite the fact that we told them to try to stay away from that as much as possible. I do believe that the people who took this review and everyone who gave an honest effort did not use social media as their their main driving force behind it. They really did take an in-depth look at those materials. Yep. Director Dressley.
I just have a question about the UFLY. So that's a pilot program that we're using currently that has, we haven't paid for that as a district yet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, we haven't paid for it through teaching and learning funds. So it was paid for through building level funds at this point, yes.
Okay, so is that that we're going to take that on as curriculum then? And it will no longer be a pilot, and that'll obviously be something that gets paid for out of the general fund?
Out of the curricular side of the, yes, the general fund, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, that is eligible for reimbursement, the UFLY.
So are we eligible for more than one reimbursement of curriculum or just one?
No more than, so whatever makes up the whole. So the one, the EL is the one that is the comprehensive, and the other, you would have to blend those together and have one foundational and then that knowledge. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you for explaining that.
On the following slide, we had engagement, as I talked about before. 68% of staff felt that EL was engaging, and 75% felt that Wit and Wisdom was engaging. And then the last one, feeling comfortable using this curriculum in our district, it was 64% for EL and 86% for Wit and Wisdom. Are there any other questions about those numbers before I move on? Chair Tate.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the, do you know why, any specific reasons why teachers may be uncomfortable using curriculum in our district?
So one of the biggest resounding answers from teachers who had said, I don't feel this, and it wasn't written in those comments, this is just from my conversations with teachers as we've gone through this process, was a concern about the rigor that we were asking kids to undertake. I would say that the process that we will go through in whatever curriculum we adopt is going to be a much more rigorous expectation for our kids to, I think, a very positive effect. I think there is extreme value in making sure that we understand what that rigor looks like and that our teachers are ready to be able to 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 deal with that with our students. I think specifically from the writing side was where a lot of that concern came from for both programs. It was a concern of we're having our students write too much if if we're doing this at our K and one levels. Director Zuzik.
Mr. Larson, can you go back two slides, please? Thank you, I just wanted to capture that, those numbers. And then one slide forward, please. Okay, then I'm just gonna make this comment. We should not be afraid. We should not be afraid of rigor because rigor is challenge. And when we have some teachers that are saying that our students aren't quite ready for it, by golly, two years from now, when they get the fourth graders that went through a good, solid curriculum from second and third grade, they will be ready for it. So, and we cannot improve our reading scores and our writing scores without improving our rigor. So rigor, although I understand that as being something that as a lifelong teacher and educator myself, it alarms me, like, gosh, can my kids really handle it? We have to always presume that they can handle it and that they're ready to go. And that leveling up of rigor is so critical that, and I appreciate that that's probably the concern that came from the earlier grades in particular, pre-K through second grade. We see that lower number of teachers that are comfortable with it. It's probably due to rigor, and we can't get there unless rigor improves. Pardon me, that was just a comment.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that, too? I hate to blame everything on COVID, but if COVID hadn't happened, would rigor even be a question?
So I think that's a good question, and I'm probably not the most knowledgeable to speak on this, but I would say that the rigor comments are not necessarily a result of what our students are or aren't able to do at this point. It's a matter of what we have been asking them to do for the last five, six, pre-COVID years even. There has been a variety of different resources that we've used over the last six, seven, eight years. And whenever that happens, the level of rigor drops just because there is no continuity between classes, between grade levels. I do think COVID is a factor in some of the things that we are seeing. But the further we get away from that, the less we can use that as an issue, so. Director Pine.
How long has Witten Wisdom been around? Part one of the question, and part two is, you know, if we stay away from looking at social media, like, have we looked at other districts that have implemented this program in the last, you know, let's just say, three to five years? And what have we seen as a result from like academic achievement in their students?
Sure. So Witten Wisdom has gone through many different iterations, as all companies do. They started off, I don't even know what the number is, 15, 20 years ago. The curriculum that we are looking at now is the 2023 revised version. So again, in accordance with a lot of the legislative mandates, they have updated their material. But as we looked around the general Minnesota area, there were not a ton of public schools that were using Witten Wisdom at that point. Obviously, that's something that will change. But looking at other districts across the United States, Witten Wisdom has become a program that many states have used. I don't want to speak to numbers just because I don't have them off the top of my head. I do know that the states that have used them have been through a very similar process. Some of the states that have used them have been through a very similar process that our state legislature went through and found that to be the same case, that Witten Wisdom was a high-quality program. I think that's really what I would encourage you to lean on, is the fact that this is not a program that our teachers have single-handedly reviewed. This is not a program that I have single-handedly reviewed. This is a program that was reviewed by our Department of Education and deemed to be high-quality.
Just a couple of things. So St. Paul uses this, but I believe this is their first year, second at most, and so that's a hard one to compare. And then just a quick comment about scores. I was going to mention this when I talked about being in the season of test-taking. One of the areas of kind of a double-edged sword right now is when we first talked about state testing, that's how all of our districts were reviewed and compared. And I think that's true again today. However, the opt-outs that we have has, that wasn't present years ago, right? So now we have a lot of students opting out. That does, that goes against our scores. And so it's really hard to have, I'm not saying they shouldn't go up. We all talk about that often and what that rigor is and what that looks like. But it's really hard to get an accurate picture with those today.
And I do understand MCA scores are important. They are the number that we are used and judged against towards the other districts in our state. However, I will say, talking to the middle school teachers who obviously have our elementary students come into them, the level of writing that our students have been able to do over the last five, six years has significantly decreased according to them. They have not seen that same level of ability to write a substantial piece. And I think, again, part of that is just a lack of consistency in how we were having our curriculum in the past. Witten Wisdom has been recognized by many districts as a very good tool to increase writing ability in students. That's one of the reasons that many of our third and fourth grade teachers were very excited about it, was the level that we are asking students to write at.
So I have a question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. And if you're not able to answer it, just get back to me when you can. What is the cycle for our curriculum review for a curriculum like this? Like, say, Witten Wisdom was the choice, and how long would it be before that curriculum was reviewed? Or it came back just out of?
So we have not been following the procedure that we should have been because of COVID and other factors. And that would be a conversation with our new Director of Teaching and Learning. However, I will say that typically, it's about a seven-year cycle. Unless, Dr. Champa, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, to be safe, I would say 10.
Sure.
Is typical. And the current materials, and right now, there's a lot of creative materials, but the current materials, I have that from fifth grade on. But do you know that off the top of your?
The current materials that fifth grade is using?
Mr. Esterbead is. 11 years.
Sure. Okay, I will move on. I do understand that there are concerns. I know that that is something that was brought up at the public session, as well as things that you have been looking at and learning about as you've investigated this curriculum. I think that anytime that concerns about curriculum, concerns about the things that we are having our students do come up, it is very important for us to be able to talk about that and talk about it in a very open way so that people can understand what is it that we are doing and how can we address those concerns? So I want to just take you briefly through, what is our review process for all of our curriculum? And this isn't just as we implement a new program. This is what our teachers do year after year with all of their curriculum that they do. So the resources that we have available to us are only resources. So when we get this curriculum, whatever we end up choosing, it will be a resource for us. Our curriculum that we teach are the state standards. And I think that's really important for us to understand. It's something that we have really had a mindset shift in the last five or so years as we've gone through a lot of professional development on literacy. We are responsible for teaching the standards. That means that a nationwide curriculum isn't always going to cover every Minnesota state standard. And I think it's really important for us to recognize that because what that means is that no matter what we go with, there will have to be additions. There will also be times when we look and say, that's probably not something that's going to meet our standard. So we don't necessarily have to teach that. As we go through this process, we do have to ask ourselves, what standards does this resource cover? This isn't something we can do just in a day or even in a week with teachers. It's a year-long process as we go about this teaching. So even though we're calling this a curriculum recommendation, it really is a resource recommendation. As we go through this process, we preview everything before we teach it. Our teachers are very intentional and methodical about going through the materials and looking and seeing, what are we asking students to do? What are the standards that the resource covers? And is it appropriate for what we are, for the students that are in front of us? We sit down with grade-level teams and we plan out this unit. When we do a brand-new curriculum like this, it will be even more intentional than it would be normally. So our teachers would normally, as a new unit comes up, they would sit down with their team. They would look through. They would plan out what does the next three to four weeks look like. And they would go through and talk about, what are the materials that we're going to use to teach these standards that we need to cover? So as we think about that with a new curriculum, we'll have to be even more intentional. And we've already discussed the idea of having after-school planning times set up for teachers to be able to look at those materials ahead of time. So during this time, we also decide which ones are age-appropriate. So when we look through, it's not just about, you know, is there violence in a book that we might not want to feature? Is there facts that are no longer accurate? I was talking with my wife about curriculum review last night. She's a state tax auditor, so this is all foreign to her as much as hers is to me. And she said, what happens if, like, there's a big, huge change? Like Pluto's no longer a planet. Do you just continue to teach that Pluto is a planet? And I said, no, we're not robots. We don't just grab the book and read from start to finish. There's a sophisticated and professional review process that all of our teachers go through. And this happens with any program that we have. We may have a social studies program that has a National Geographic component with it that might just have pictures in it that we don't want to have shown to our second-grade students if that was the book. We might have a math curriculum that teaches a skill that is not a standard for us. And so we'll skip over that part of that program. When we go through this process, it is not, we're going to take this book and teach it from page one till page 300, start to finish. There is a meticulous process that we go through. It's what good teachers do, and it's what our teachers do. And everybody knows that this is going to mean more work for them. And I think that's one of the things that all of the teachers have acknowledged is that the things that we're going to be doing over the next year, moving forward, with whatever curriculum is chosen, it's going to be a lot of work. But it's the work that we do, and that's what has to happen regardless of the resource, regardless of the subject that we are teaching. So there are going to be materials that, when we look through them, we are going to decide not to teach them. There are going to be materials that we'll have to add in in order to teach our curriculum, which is the state standards. However, resoundingly from teachers over and over again, we know that the quality strategies and rigorous thinking that Witten Wisdom is asking our students to do is going to raise their level of achievement. So we bring to you our unified resource recommendation for Witten Wisdom. And I will take any other questions that you have.
It's my first swing at this, Mr. Larson, but you know that there's some discomfort on the board about adapting Witten Wisdom in its fullness and in its entirety. is there a way that we could move forward to say that in regard to pedagogy, which means the development of a learning structure for children? That's what pedagogy means. Based on the pedagogy and the data that the state and the 11,220 hours of people within our district have looked at Witten Wisdom and bring forth this recommendation, is there a way that we can say yes and? And yes and might be, yes and no matter what comprehensive program we adopt, whatever, no matter what program we adopt, there will be literature in it that will be offensive to some?
I would say that every single program that we looked at had some kind of pushback to it.
Yeah, 100%. And there's two or three that I know of that have more of a pushback than Witten Wisdom did. But can we, would you accept? This isn't about you, pardon me. But would it be appropriate to make an adoption with a thoughtful review of the literary choices that Witten Wisdom chose? And then move forward from there? Like, there may be some that are, gosh, I'm not, I'm not ready with this. I'm not okay with this literary choice. I'm not ready with this literary choice. But there might be 30 books per year, per curriculum cycle. And there's several that are being challenged. And no matter what curriculum we adopt, there will be many that will be challenged. There'll be several that will be challenged. But is there a way, Mr. Larson, that we can say yes to this and take a careful, slow look at what we're doing and look at the ones that other people have caused alarm about? And review those? And with a high degree of discernment, consider those? And I wonder, as I ask Mr. Larson, I wonder if the board can think about it in that way? And I don't know what else to say, but, I mean, Witten Wisdom clearly, in regard to a pedagogy, is clearly a good choice. But for us to say yes to something that is objectional to some, we need to, we need to raise a yellow flag and say, hey, caution here, caution here, caution here. And Dr. Champa, you have the, I apologize, I'm putting you on the spot for this. But, but we have some of the systems in place for that. And there's some systems that we can put in place between now and full adoption. I'm asking that.
Yes, so one thing that I just want to clarify, so I don't lose sight of it, the 11,250 hours of review, that was the department. That wasn't us locally. So I just want to make sure I clarify that.
Well, I'm still on a hot mic, so give me the moment. If that's true, I know that we've had two and a half professional days looking at this. So we're way the heck beyond 11,200 hours. So this is, oh goodness, I didn't realize that. There's a lot more than that when you look at just our district level and all of our special ed and reading teachers that have been looking at this, and all of our elementary teachers, so pardon me. I'll close my mic and just, is there some way that we can solemnanically cut the baby in half on this deal?
So if I could just speak a little bit to some of that, it would be well within the school board's decisionary right to be able to say, we would like to create a committee or a group over the summer, even if it's a group of teachers, that we will pay to come together over the summer to review the materials at each grade level prior to that review process that we will still go through before teaching them each time. That makes absolute sense to me. One of the things that I always want to make sure that we think about when we think about the challenges that go towards a book or the discomfort that goes towards a book, before we make any decisions on that and before somebody decides that they should or shouldn't be taught, I really encourage you to read the book. I think that's a really important piece to this. I think that's a really important piece to this. I got a chance to look at some of the same material over the last couple of days that I'm sure you have been able to see, that I know some of our people who have presented concerns have been able to see. And when I went and got the books and read them, it wasn't necessarily through the same vein that it was presented on social media or on those sites. So I do encourage people to read the books, and whether that's the school board deciding to read those books, you certainly can do that. Parents are always welcome to ask for the books that we have for our students in our curriculum to read, absolutely. But I could also see a spot where we could ask some teachers to come together and read the books in their curriculum for, you know, a day or two in the summer.
I'd like to make a comment, or I guess several. I'm gonna... So first, I just want to give some background. So when we had a working session several weeks ago, all of the board members took curricula home to read. I had this book, this stack, fourth grade curriculum to read through, and I did. It was funny because I have a fourth grade son, and he came out of his bedroom the next morning. I said, "Did you see what I got for you?" And he was horrified. But anyway, I read the curriculum, and I have to say, I absolutely agree with between these two curricula. Hands down, Witten Wisdom seemed like the better choice. I'm no expert for sure, but it just seemed like a much better structure, much easier to execute, all of that. So I was good with Witten Wisdom. And then I went to the implementation guide online and started reading that, and it's got a lot more of the books for all the other grades and everything. And I spent vast majority of that entire day. The good thing about this is it's elementary curricula, it's elementary books. You can find many, many, many Read Alouds on YouTube on elementary books. I listened to book after book after book in its entirety. And my concerns are, my biggest concerns are, yes, with the books not being age-appropriate, there's a lot of very, I'll say, dark subjects, as our public commenter actually spoke to. There's a lot of very dark subjects. And so when you have this kind of darkness combined with the fact of the structure is that the students read the book, and then they spend weeks and weeks on this book, right? And so there's that aspect of it. But a bigger concern for me was if we do have books that parents find objectionable, and they have the right to opt their students out.
Correct.
So if a parent were to choose to do that, their student would miss out on weeks of instruction, which would obviously put them behind. So in my head, right, I'm thinking, why does teaching kids how to read have to be so controversial? Right? Like, can't we find books that every single family is comfortable with, you know, with having their kids exposed to and make sure that we don't have anybody opting out of? So that's one of my concerns. And, I mean, in general, is, yes, the books. And can we find more? And obviously, we can. My other concern, frankly, is the social-emotional learning piece that is intertwined throughout the entire thing is through CASL. And I've done a lot of research on CASL, and I've actually opted my own daughter out of some of our SEL-type lessons, which is from a derivative of CASL, because there's a lot of social justice-type themes in there and activism and all this kind of stuff. And I don't find it appropriate for school districts to teach kids how to become activists. I simply don't. I think that if parents want to teach their kids that, that's great, go right ahead and do it. But let's focus on, right now, let's focus on teaching kids how to read. Right? And yes, I agree, we need to teach kids how to be good people, but it's the activism part of it that I just, I object to. So I guess, along with the books, is there a way to peel back that activism type, those themes that I'm sure are interwoven within this? Because it flat-out says in the implementation guide that it is SEL through CASL.
I don't want to speak to that large amount of what would be required to be able to do that, strictly because I have not been able to look through every lesson of every, you know, grade level of this curriculum. That's a comment that maybe your fellow board members can address and decide on how they would want to talk about that. I would say the way that we have taken to teaching social-emotional learning at our elementary schools has been through our Second Step program, and that would be where that would remain, the focus of that. I can't say that we would be able to extract those pieces completely, again, not knowing how they're interwoven into the fabric of that program. But what I can say is that the social-emotional learning that we have done with our program, Second Step, has shown, and you've all had a chance to hear our elementary principals come up here and share numbers and share changes, it has shown to be an improvement in our buildings, and that social-emotional learning is a part of that. I can't speak to CASL, I can't speak to the complexity that is Witten Wisdom, but I can say that that is not something that we would abandon to completely go with having Witten Wisdom teach our social-emotional learning.
Thank you.
Pardon me, can I, it's a direct follow-up question, can I ask? Pardon me, Director Pine, what I'm hearing you say is, there may be some social-emotional lessons embedded in some of the instructional materials of Witten Wisdom, but it wouldn't replace what we're currently doing? Just to be clear.
That's correct. And as I think about, Chair Tate, the other question that has come up about this a few times tonight is the depth of learning that we go into around a particular book. I can't address that because that was something that was brought up by our teachers as different than the strategy that we use now. So when we look at that and we think about what is happening over those two weeks or three weeks, it's usually only about two weeks of a single book, if that, it is done through the lens of different standards. So when we think about a specific book, a book can teach us more than one strategy, a book can teach us more than one standard to look at. So when we think about character development, which is one of our standards, that's going to be able to be looked at in a way that learning the moral of a story is going to be in a different way. So we're still examining the text. The other thing that I appreciate about Witten Wisdom is that we, for many, many of our texts, are using bigger, thicker, complex texts that take more than just one day to read. I think one of the things that we have learned over the last couple of years is that having sustained learning from day to day with the same kind of text can help deepen that understanding. One of the big flaws in the way that we have been teaching is we haven't had a vocabulary-rich program. And when we talk about a thematic program like Witten Wisdom, we can have an in-depth vocabulary that may be above what a normal first, second, or third grader would be able to use on a specific subject, but because we're spending more time at it, we can get into those deeper-level vocabulary, talk about morphology, talk about prefixes and suffixes, all of those kinds of things that would allow our students to have that greater depth of vocabulary. So when we think about the number of days on a book, yes, it's the same book, but it's not the same subject matter over and over again.
So mine is more of a comment. I am grateful that you said, you know, if we adopt this curriculum, that the teachers and/or a committee or whatever could decide, this book isn't right. Because in doing my research, that was one of my concerns. I have four kids, they couldn't be any different from each other. I mean, even parenting them has been really challenging because they're so different. My first one would have read, can I say the topics that are kind of dark? Like, I can, okay. So, I mean, scalping is in one of the books, the mom, the boy witnesses a mom having a miscarriage and bleeding. I'm trying to think of what the other one was. I mean, there are heavy subjects. And so my first kid would have read that book. Yes, we have an actual dictionary in our house. He wouldn't have said a word to me, he would have went to the dictionary, looked up the words he didn't know, moved on with his life. My second kid would have read over the words, not knowing what they meant, and just kept going, like, who cares, right? My third kid would come ask me, but then make all kinds of faces at me and run away. My fourth kid, that stuff would cause nightmares.
Sure.
She'd be up, we wouldn't sleep, she'd be clingy. I mean, we have anxiety and mental health issues in our school, so just a comment, more or less, that it does help me to know that maybe if that book is not age-appropriate, that we can just say, let's replace this with something else. There's tons of great materials out there. It doesn't have to be blood and gore and things that maybe their hearts just aren't quite ready for, no matter how good the book is. I'm sure the book is great.
Sure.
I'm sure it is. But for the age and the world we're living in right now, I mean, kids are growing up so fast as it is, I just like them to maintain their innocence and still just think of the fun in the world rather than the heaviness of the world.
So one of the books that you brought up, specifically referencing the scalping situation, that was brought to my attention yesterday, along with a variety of other aspects of that book. And so I did reach straight out to the company once I read the book and said, yep, these are the things that are in it. And they helped walk me through what the guide would be for that. And in that book, that is, again, super-thick, there are only chapters of it that are read, and those chapters that include some of that gorier material is not read by the student or the teacher in that, during those lessons. So yes, the book is still there, but the specific aspects of it are not taught according to that lesson. And again, that would be something that, as teachers, we could look through and decide, yep, this is, they have cut out the right amount of parts, and we're feeling comfortable with it, or we're not. You know, I think one of the things that all of you who have gone through a system and have had a great teacher, and everybody has had a great teacher, for me, one of the things that I have always really enjoyed is Read Alouds. I love reading aloud to my kids, I loved when my teachers read aloud to me, and I remember reading books in fourth and fifth grade and just loving them, loving them, loving them. And then going back to read them later on as a young adult or even as an adult, and realizing that my teachers changed, like, a dozen to two dozen words in that book because that wasn't appropriate for us at the time, and we didn't know. And I'm not saying that every teacher is going to be able to do that, and that's why we need that review process, but this is something that we do all the time.
Okay, so, one, thank you and your staff for all the research. I dove through fifth grade, and I didn't look at social media, I didn't even think to. I was just really trying to get my head around, like, what, you know, what am I really looking for, you know, trying to navigate these? So I appreciate the work that your staff has done. 1,000% Witten Wisdom, right? I thought it was much easier, I kind of tried to apply it to my kids. But we got the guide, and then I started seeing, like, trying to follow that along and tie it in with the other grades, but then I saw some, just the names of the books, right? So then, of course, that led me down the path. And, you know, thinking back to, like, our students, you know, mental health has been brought up in, like, multiple venues, and, you know, every kid is at kind of a different spot when it comes to some of the gruesomeness. But the one piece that I think everybody could 1,000% agree on is some of those books had some suicidal ideations. And like, safety being the number-one priority versus rigor, in my mind, like, sitting at this board table, that's my huge alarm, is, you know, there was, like, shaming, and, you know, then there was research about, like, that's the number-one cause of suicide in adolescents. So my biggest concern is, like, my vote is yes, but, the but is entirely around the safety. And, you know, that review process, you know, I think we have to be very, you know, very, very cautious, and, you know, invite parents, I mean, let this selection process, you know, have some depth to it and some selection, because that is honestly my biggest takeaway, you know, to Melissa's point, or Director Miller's point, like, we all have kids that would have looked at it differently. You know, some are just reading it, turning the pages just to get done with it, and not probably grasping it. But the safety piece is by far what I think we need to probably focus most of our attention on, or, you know, is kind of my biggest concern.
I love when you're here, Andy. We get to talk about reading, and I love to read. And I appreciate, too, the accommodations you've extended to the board, you could do the summer work and that, but I am wary of the conversation that we're having at the table steering towards micromanagement. I mean, that is not our role, and I feel like we're losing the trust and honoring the work that your crew has dedicated to this. Even if you look at, like, MTSS as an example, like, that captures 75% to 80% of kids, right? Any curriculum we buy is probably going to satisfy 80% of folks, and then there's going to be some objectional pieces in there. So I think you've done a lot to defend the art and craft of teaching and the work that you do every day, and I don't know if you should be put in that spot, that we are micromanaging, like, that teacher behavior, that, like, we trust them with our kids, and I trust them with that work. So I just want to say thank you for everything you've done and put into this, and keep it up. Thank you so much. That stakeholder input is huge, and that should really guide our decision. Those are the folks that say, this works for me, and I can crush it.
I want to thank you, too. This has been a tough thing for me. Director Brunz, the only thing I take exception to there, I don't think we're micromanaging, I just don't think, we're not here to rubber-stamp, okay? And there's a definite difference there. And families have an ability and should have the ability to be part of this, too, right? So I just don't think it's, I don't think we're trying to do too much here. I just don't think we're just, I trust teachers, first of all. I don't want that, I don't like being told I don't trust teachers if I don't necessarily just want to rubber-stamp this. I just want to do my homework on it, and it's, there's a lot of work here, and I am hesitant to move forward with it, I'm not going to lie, but I don't think it's because I want to micromanage it. I think it's because I just don't want to slap it down and we're done. So that's all I want to say on that.
It's a 10-year commitment and a huge investment, too, right? So to that point, it's, you know, we're not just making a decision for, you know, tomorrow, and obviously, curriculums do have adjustments, and I'm sure the state's going to have different, you know, changes over the years, too, but I just want to make sure that we're fiscally managing, you know, the investment. And, I mean, I know it's never one-size-fits-all, I mean, that's evident.
I do have another question. So I get what you're saying when they say they're reviewing new curriculum, and can they really change something in two months' time? But is it possible that these curriculum companies knew what the new standards would be and had been working on it prior, so that when the review process came, oh, golly, we're on top of it, we know what the state of Minnesota wanted? And that the new curriculums coming or going to be approved would be good ones? And kind of a second question to that is, you said you had already reviewed 10 of them, and these two, these two were top, like, top two?
Yeah, so before we went through and found out that these were the ones that were covered, these two programs were the ones that had already stood out to us as these are exceptional.
Okay, so that was kind of my next question, is were there any that were above these two that could possibly be, you know, on the list of being approved, and should we wait to look at those? Or do you just still think Witten Wisdom's the way to go? I don't think any of the others even compare.
Sure. I guess, I can't speak to whether a curriculum company was ahead of the game on that. I guess my thought process would be the expectations around what we're calling the science of reading now is not a Minnesota-based thing. This is something that is global and national now, and has been, the research has been around for 40, 50 years, and it has really just come into the spotlight in the last 10. But this process has been ongoing in other states for years and years. So I don't anticipate... in other states for years and years, so I don't anticipate, I hate to belittle Minnesota, but I don't anticipate somebody saying, "Oh, well, we better change everything for Minnesota." I've reached out to companies and asked if anybody has a Minnesota curriculum, and that's just not a thing, no one has a curriculum that has Minnesota standards in it, hence, you know, the conversation that we talked about earlier, about that needing to be selective and, you know, being able to replace things that we need to. My other hesitation with any waiting would be, it would be extremely hard to implement something for next year. The earliest that they would reveal that list of names would be May, it sounds like May 1st is the plan for that, and even from there, I don't think we could line up time to look at materials until beginning of June earliest, it's quite a process, so.
Is the plan to implement the wit and wisdom beginning of next school year, the 2024-2025 school year?
That would be the plan, yes.
All right, first and foremost, I applaud you for the work that you did and came tonight, and knowing that since just yesterday, there have been some concerns and what that might look like, and so, thank you for the work that you've done. So really, your comment about the baby, you do have some options, right? So I added to my list of your options, though, so your options really are approve wit and wisdom. We've walked this journey for a while, and like anything, the concerns came up recently. You can approve wit and wisdom with modifications, as was discussed, you can delay and ask some additional questions, and to a point, a question that was asked of Andy, with the number of curriculums that are being re-looked at, that list is supposed to be out May 1st. We tried to be really proactive, and remember, we were using ed reports to try to decide which ones were going to be on the list, and so we did look at a number of them, however, as soon as that list came out, we didn't do the deep dive, we did not do the full day with our staff and have the companies come in, and so that was the level that we reviewed those. And then the final one that I had, with modifications with that, we can change books out, we can do that kind of thing, but I just want to be careful with that, as long as that's the extent of what those modifications are, because if it's what might be skills or something like that, I just don't want our teachers to be burdened with additional concerns, that they're going to be criticized, or that is just not what we want for our staff. So there's really four options. And wait for MDE's reposting was the fourth one.
I apologize, Dr. Champa, for my ineptitude in following it, but one is to embrace and say, "Heck yeah, let's go," so that was one. One is to say, "None of these, and let's wait, please take a little bit more time to talk about the other two." And the two that I said were, "Heck yeah, let's go," and "None of these, and let's wait," and then what were the other two, because you said that there were four, and I just, I didn't capture cognitively what the other two were.
That's probably because I wasn't very succinct with that. So, number one is to approve wit and wisdom, number two, approve wit and wisdom with modifications that can be accomplished, number three would be delay to answer any additional questions, and number four would be wait for MDE to publish the outcome of the reevaluated materials.
Madam Chair, I would recommend that we approve wit and wisdom with accommodations, with modifications, pardon me, and I seek a second only to open the conversation for more conversation.
So, just one thing to be clear, this is also one thing that I learned in the MSBA training, we can have as much conversation as we want before we make a motion, to make sure that we know where we're going with a motion. So, if that's your concern, I don't know that we're at a point yet where I'm necessarily comfortable with making a motion, but...
I appreciate, and I agree with your comment, that we can converse and then make a motion in a bit. I will also say that a bio-break might be a good idea in the next few minutes.
Well, I would agree, we're at 8:15, it's been over two hours. Yeah, let's call a, let's say a seven-minute recess, folks can absorb things and think through things a bit, too.
Is that a good idea?
I agree, so let's come back at 8:23.
Yeah, pardon me, thank you, ma'am.
All right, it's 8:23, folks, so we will get back to our discussion on the curriculum. First, I want to make sure, I want to clarify, do we have a motion on the table, because we have to deal with that if we do?
Madam Chair, I think, based on our conversation so far, and I made a motion to inspire conversation, and it might have even been seconded, if it was, I don't remem, it was not seconded. I'm looking at Tammy Ludwig, she's saying it was not seconded, and correctly, it wasn't seconded, and so we're still just conversing, and there's no motion on the table.
Okay, all right, good, I just wanted to deal with that in case we needed to. All right, so, opening it up for discussion, so that we can make our way to a motion, we obviously understand the four options for motions tonight, so, looking for input, feedback, et cetera. And actually, I'll just, I'd like to say one thing, so, we've talked about the fact that this is possibly a 10-plus-year commitment, it's extremely expensive, and to your point, Director Brunz, I totally understand we don't want to micromanage, however, in statute, it clearly states that school boards are responsible for curriculum, so this is a big part of our responsibility statutorily, so we want to get it right, right? So I want to make sure that we do have a robust conversation, so that we get to a point where all board members are comfortable, because I don't want, frankly, I don't want to vote in anything that is divisive, and we can't get folks on board, right? So that's our objective. All right, so, looking for input, feedback from board members on where you're sitting at this moment, so that we can understand where we're kind of gauging for a motion. Yes, Director Dressley?
So this is the first time that we've actually, or since I've been on the board, that we've seen curriculum or had curriculum come before us as a board, in the two years that I've been on the board anyways. It is a 10-year commitment, the only reason I'm a little reluctant to delay a decision is because I wouldn't want to delay it without having a clear path forward for how we're going to gain more information from the experts, so, that would be my only consideration for, I would want a clear path forward.
Director Zuzik?
I agree with Vice Chair Dressley, I don't think that there's new information waiting around the corner on this, and there's not a clear path forward, and so I think delaying the conversation is not a good idea. And by the way, our district needs to move forward with a choice, with a decision.
I don't really want to task Mr. Larson and his team with more work, you know, that's a concern, I know the hours that they've spent on this. I think before I saw that, you know, whatever the implementation guide was, I thought it was a pretty clear decision, so I'm comfortable moving forward with the option two, with motion to approve, with the ability to amend, or modification, thank you.
I would be okay with modifications, also, I think it helps with transparency, accountability, all of that, I think I would consider that, yes.
So, I know we've asked a lot of questions tonight, and thank you so much for all of your answers and knowledge and the time you've put in, because I do feel this is a massive decision, and the reality is, we answer to the public, and during our election, we definitely know families have left due to content in schools, so if we're to serve all students, kind of becomes easy to know that we need to just remove certain things that don't fit all students, like gore might not be age-appropriate, you know? And I know that touches some boundaries, and I know it ruffles feathers, and I know all of that, but the reality is, there's millions of books that we can choose from to make it a very enjoyable reading experience for our children, and keep families here, and not lose families. So just like the example of my kids, each and every child in this district has a different heart, a different background, a different everything, and so, you know, if we just keep it more neutral, so I do like option two as well, that I trust you and your team, I trust Dr. Champa, and it makes me feel even better to know that you guys had looked at this curriculum prior, and it was top one and two, that, you know, I'm not a teacher, so it's good to know that it's teacher-backed, and that you guys trust it, and know that you can implement it well, so that's kind of where I stand.
In the circle, in the round, I believe that a delay is a nonstarter, there's going to be PD we need to get and have that secured, so our staff are rolling through, and we can implement this and have the materials, so we can do this for fiscal year '25. If the modifications are coming down to the professionals and people using the classroom, then I'm comfortable with that, I would just be wary that that becomes too much of our business, and we don't leave that in the hands of the administrators and the teachers that are charged with the care of those children.
And to be clear, if there is anything left over that is questionable, there is a process that parents can follow to request a curriculum review, right? So that's a good point to make, right, if any of this is, does make it that far. So, and yeah, I do want to thank your team, I commented to Dr. Champa yesterday, it's the So a lot of the other programs have authors from Europe or authors from Asia, African authors, authors that have a variety of different viewpoints that come together to be able to showcase what it looks like around the world. Amplify did not provide a window or a mirror that would be for all of our students. We felt that it just wasn't really where we wanted our kids to be at in terms of the content. I think from the content side, that was one of the things that drew us to these two curriculums specifically, was the, you know, very close tie-ins with science and social studies. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'll just add to that, that there's a lot of controversy with Amplify. So if you Google that, or you will find probably a little bit more. So with that, there was a very intentional approach to that, and there were some texts that were replaced.
All right, any other? Go ahead.
So I was just going to say, one of the things that I think will need to be clear, even if it's not tonight, if we decide to move forward with modifications, we'll need the framework of what that modification system looks like. What are the expectations for that? As I said, I am confident that we could find some teachers if we want to do a summer review. If the, if an overall review ahead of time is what we would prefer to do, I would encourage it to be in the summer. It would be a time when we could pay teachers to come in. It wouldn't take very long to read through those texts and have an evaluation program that they could go through for that. But we would need some kind of framework for that.
And that was my reservation about the modifications piece, is who's developing that framework? And it becomes subjective, less so than objective. So how do we make sure that that maintains the, all the pieces that we needed to be? And then the fidelity that that curriculum requires?
Madam Chair, I've, I'm passing around. Do you have enough of them? Ms. Dressley? Okay. Just, I want you to look at this, which we're all very familiar with. And to those viewers at home, we're looking at the board governance model between what is the role of the school board and what is the role of school administration and school staff and the instructional experts. And here's what I think happened, if I may be so bold. We went around the cycle, and we got, we said, on the bottom half, that's the superintendent manages this. On the top, the school board manages this. And we said, starting, I'm starting at 9 o'clock, if you will. I'm starting at 9 o'clock. We said, let's look at our curriculum and see what needs to happen to, you know, implement a good curriculum. And then we came back to 12 o'clock, and we said, these are the expectations that we have. And a lot of work happened from midsummer till now with alignment of what we asked to establish and then adopt. We got to adopt, and we felt a little bit uncomfortable. We felt uncomfortable. We felt uncomfortable. So then you go into developing the plans again. Where does it go? We're not asking the group to go back and redo everything. We're asking the group to go back and look at the implementation of this. And we're going to ask them to monitor it. But what we've really done here, I think, is if you look at 12 o'clock again, we've said, we're establishing new expectations, expectations that weren't there 12 months ago. And we're saying, don't move forward without including a thoughtful consideration of the content and what might be objectionable content. So then what do we do? We say, hey, team, we've done what we can do. We're going to adapt with modifications. And that, that meets with what's there at 3 o'clock. Adopt with modification. And now, we let the team work. And the team is not us. The team is Dr. Champa and whomever she says is on the team. But I think that's the way that I see this model playing out. And it's a little bit complex, right? Because this is different than what we were taught in our School Board 101. Because today, it got a little bit, got a little messy. But I can still see a way through it.
I like this. Yeah, well, you know, I just, I'm at 12 o'clock yet, okay? And right now, we're still at 12 o'clock. And any successful organization or anything that operates well doesn't end at the adopt part. And that's why I, I'm not here to micromanage. But if we want to be good at something, we have to be adaptable, right? I mean, as a, as a, as a board, as a district, I think we've worked well together. Because we can adapt a little bit. But to adopt this with some parameters is, and I understand the concerns, Mr. Brunz. I do, Director Brunz, I do. I respect that totally. But we should have an expectation of bettering ourselves too, right? So I don't think we're asking anything come this summer that's over and above anything that's unreachable. I think, now seeing this again, you know, I like what I see here. And I, it just doesn't end at adopting it, to me.
I don't think so either, Director Biermeyer. I think it ends up back at us looking back at it, scratching our heads and saying, yes, and there's some new expectations. Yes, and there's some parameters.
And when I think about modifications, I think that would be up to the Director of Teaching and Learning and our Superintendent to set those parameters. And I hate to add more to her plate, but I don't see anybody else that could be.
We're interviewing tomorrow.
Well, that's where I would see the modifications. Coming from anyways, are the parameters for the modifications. That's, I would trust the professional.
And that's below the line. Pardon that. But that's management, not government.
I think, right, all of our concerns have been heard. Comes down to age appropriateness and not controversial. Not, we don't want kids opting out of this, right? Or parents opting their kids out of this. So whatever that means, I mean, yeah, you guys are the experts. You know what might cause a trigger. And I know there might be some kid who has nightmares about clowns, and you pick a book about clowns, and, you know. And there's that. But regardless, I think, I think the parameters are right. We want, we want every family to feel comfortable with what, that's the goal. We want every single family to feel comfortable with what their kids are learning, in learning how to read. Any other? Director Susick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we want every family to feel comfortable. And we want to make a good pedagogical decision about which curriculum we adopt. And it is, it seems, from what I've heard, hands-down, wit and wisdom is the best. And so, let's build off of wit and wisdom and pump the brake pedal and ask Dr. Champa to meet with the people on her team to do the right thing.
All right, any, Director Biermeyer?
How big a ask is that? I mean, really, honestly, I guess I need to know.
Yeah, so of course, my wheels are turning over here really fast in what that wants to look like. Because I'm not in favor of adopting something that's not going to look like this at the end of it, right? And so I, I would want to go back and look at that and look at what we want to do with options and given those two items as the parameters.
Respectfully, I think we have a starting point with the 31 different texts that were concerning to other people as they looked at this curriculum. And then looking at those and figuring out which ones are problematic. I don't think we have to look at every single text. Pardon me.
So I guess, is your preference to actually vote on this tonight? Or to give you some time first before we, and bring it back to the table at a later time?
I think my preference is that you vote on it tonight. And then in the meantime, that gives us some time to come back. You can always move in another direction.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion that ISD 200 adopt the wit and wisdom curriculum and take a cautious step between adoption and implementation to make sure that the texts that are adopted are appropriate.
I'm not going to get that motion complete in my recap, but I will give it a try. All right.
Ms. Ludwig, we can go back tomorrow, and you can look at that, and we'll get it.
So the motion on the table is?
Basically, the motion on the table is to adopt wit and wisdom with a cautious, thoughtful review and consideration to ensure that the... With modifications, thank you. Save me.
All right, then I am looking for a second to that motion.
Brunz will second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, I just want to say thank you, board members, for the due diligence that was done on this. I have to say that, that, yeah, this was definitely our first curriculum review. And I'm not going to say, when I saw that box of curriculum over there, knowing that probably this much of it was going to be mine to take home and read, it was intimidating, right? And I think we probably all had the same, the same thought. But thank you for putting in the work in this and the thoughtfulness and the collaboration. I think it was a good, a great demonstration of working together here. And again, thank you to Andy and team and all of the staff who have spent a lot of time doing this. Thank you to the parents who've taken the time to review this. Everyone, it is a big decision. So with that, is there any further commentary or discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting wit and wisdom with modifications? Say aye. Aye. All right, the motion passes unanimously to adopt wit and wisdom with modifications in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more thing on our agenda here. We have future meetings coming up. So we do have to, board members, we have to find a time to add in another night into April. April 9th is our next time together. However, that is our teachbacks for the strength's work that we've been doing. So that night is already, I believe, four and a half hours long. So we have to add in a closed session for negotiations, a closed session for security overview, and a special working session, or an additional working session. Question is, one of the things that we were discussing, addressing at the working session is the student school board member applicants. That has to happen soon. We could potentially tack that on to the already-scheduled working session. I don't know that it would take a lot of time. If you're comfortable with that?
As long as my fellow committee members were comfortable with it, I'd be, because that was the plan, to give the feedback for, give an update for who's going to be interviewed on the April working session, so.
Okay, so this looks like a long list, but the idea is to get it into one night. So if we're comfortable with doing that on the night, then I'm wondering if folks have availability for next week, possibly? Like the second or the third?
For the closed sessions?
For the closed sessions and the additional working session. The April 2nd or 3rd, next Tuesday or Wednesday?
April 2nd, I have a board meeting at 9:17. So 3rd, I'm clear.
Okay, the 3rd? Does the 3rd work for?
3rd works for me.
We can be flexible.
was done on this. I have to say that, that, yeah, this was definitely our first curriculum review. And I'm, I'm not going to say, when I saw that box of curriculum over there, knowing that probably this much of it was going to be mine to take home and read, it was, it was intimidating, right? And I think we probably all had the same, the same thought. But thank you for putting in the work in this and the thoughtfulness and the collaboration. I think it was a good, a great demonstration of working together here. And again, thank you to Andy and team and all of the staff who have spent a lot of time doing this. Thank you to the parents who've taken the time to review this. Everyone, it is a big decision. So with that, is there any further commentary or discussion? All right. All those in favor of adopting wit and wisdom with modifications, say aye. Aye. All right. The motion passes unanimously to adopt wit and wisdom with modifications in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. One more thing on our agenda here. We have future meetings coming up. So we do have to, board members, we have to find a time to add in another night into April. April 9th is our next time together. However, that is our teachbacks for the strength's work that we've been doing. So that night is already, I believe, four and a half hours long. So we have a, to add in a closed session for negotiations, a closed session for security overview, and a special working session, or an additional working session. Question is, one of the things that we were discussing, addressing at the working session is the student school board member applicants. That has to happen soon. We could potentially tack that on to the already scheduled working session. I don't know that it would take a lot of time. If you're comfortable with that?
As long as my fellow committee members were comfortable with it, I'd be, because that was the plan, to give the feedback for, give an update for who's going to be interviewed on the April working session. So.
Okay. So this looks like a long list, but the idea is to get it into one night. So if we're comfortable with doing that on the night, then I'm wondering if folks have availability for next week possibly, like the second or the third? For the closed sessions and the additional working session? The April 2nd or 3rd, next Tuesday or Wednesday?
April 2nd, I have a board meeting at 9:17.
Okay.
So third, I'm clear.
Okay, the third? Does the third work for?
Third works for me.
We can be flexible.
Six or later?
Yeah. Ideally, six or later, for sure. Okay. Okay. Dr. Suzik, you're good with six, six on Wednesday night?
And that's closed for negotiations or?
Negotiation, is that enough time? We had talked about this.
And it's closed for security.
No, it's, oh, no.
And parameters.
It could be.
Security can be later, right?
Well, we just have to check with the presenter. We can put it on and then I can check.
Well, we, we don't have to list anything yet, but, okay. But the main, the main reason was for the negotiation parameters. So if that's not going to be ready, then we need to look at different dates.
I think the two together is going to be a really long meeting.
Okay.
So I think it should be two.
Two separate meetings.
So put this, put the security one on April 2nd and we'll just verify that our third, we'll verify that our presenter is available. And then we can look out a little further for the other.
So, so, yeah, so April 3rd, tentatively for a security overview. All right.
And then are we adding to the April 9th? How, like 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
Yes, for the student school board member.
Yes, that will be April 9th for a working session. Front end or back end or the meeting?
I think the meeting, the meeting starts at like 5:30, right? Or five?
Five.
Five o'clock?
But if you want to move it to 4:30 to give the extra time?
I don't know, folks who work and.
Which one?
The 9th.
The 9th of April.
Nope.
No.
That's our teachback.
The teachbacks with, yeah. The strength's work.
We only need 10 minutes to be completely honest. 10, 15 minutes. I don't think the discussion will take much longer than that. We're going to have time for meeting before then as a committee.
Okay. So the 9th, you want to do it first?
Yeah.
4:30? 4:45?
4:45.
And would that be, that would be in the district office then? So for the 15 minutes? Oh. Okay. 4:45? Would that work? Okay. 4:45 on the 9th. Okay. So we have 40, 45 on the 9th for that. And then the tentative closed session on the 3rd for a security overview at this point. And then we need to find time for the negotiation parameters, which, would that be acceptable to tack that on to our regular school board meeting on the 24th? Or that's going to be lengthy? Okay. So we don't want to do that, is what you're saying, but not saying. Okay. How about the 23rd, the night before the regular meeting? So we can, or the 25th? No, I can't do the 23rd.
Is this something that's going to become a vote at the regular meeting?
Developing contract parameters for negotiations.
Negotiations.
For the contracts, for all, all the nine contracts coming up? Okay. So the 23rd, is that doable or not?
Works for me.
Okay.
That'd be another closed session, maybe. And are we looking at 6 PM or?
I think so. 6 PM on the 23rd? Okay. So got that scheduled. Thank you. And then, I usually like to tell folks what we're expecting to do here. As I said, we don't, we don't really have that working sessions, a normal working session scheduled for April. We, let's see, sorry. I don't have much of a framework coming up for the April regular meeting. Sorry about that. So that's where we sit at this point. All right. And with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I motion to adjourn. This is Mark Suzik.
Second, Dressley.
All right. Any discussion? All right. With none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously to adjourn at 8:55 PM.